Good morning, all. Good morning. Another beautiful day here in Manatee County, and I'd like to thank everyone for being here today. What I'd like to do is call our work session on Saturday, June the 8th, everything parish work session. And again, thank you for being here this morning. What we'll have today is that there'll be presentations made on every aspect of what's happening within the county regarding to parish. At the end of the presentations, I will, we're going to allow for 30 minutes of public comment, but it'll be based on, only on the presentations that were for today. And we'd appreciate you staying on topic on that, on questions. And staff and some of the commissioners will be here after the 30 minutes to address any other concerns or questions that you might have. And as we do every day, every meeting we have, we always honor God and our country. So this, uh, this morning, I'd like to introduce Pastor Ricky Stevens. Is he here this morning? There he is. Good morning, sir. Uh, the St. Mary's Missionary Baptist Church to do the invocation. And then for the pledge of allegiance, we're going to have retired Navy captain and our chief of staff, Andy Butterfield, to do the pledge. If we all could rise, please.
Amen. Thank you for this opportunity to come in and do the invocation for this, uh, for this gathering. And I thank you for that. Psalm 133 say, "Bless and behold, a brother who gathered together in unity." And Father God, we come this morning and we invite you into this proceeding. We pray, Father God, that your Spirit will be present and active in this proceeding. For we know where the Spirit is, there is liberty. Where your Spirit is, there is love. Where your Spirit is, there is compassion. Where your Spirit is, there is strength. And where your Spirit is, there is unity. We pray, Lord God, that you would bless this gathering, bless the commissioners to operate according to your divine commandments. Bless the peoples of parish in the Manatee County and to love you one another that you have loved us. Oh, God, we thank you for this community. We thank you for what you have done and we thank you for what you will do. We pray, Lord God, that everything that will be done will be done in the spirit of love and compassion. We pray, Lord, that we never forget from whence we came, that we will honor and cherish old parish as we look forward to the changes of the future. Again, Lord, I ask your richest blessing on this proceeding, the commissioners, but most important, the people who make up this great, beautiful community. I pray all this in the name of my Lord and Savior, Jesus the Christ. And everyone said, amen? And amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Now please join me in pledging our allegiance to our great nation. I pledge allegiance through the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice-
Justice for all. Thank you, Pastor. Thanks for being here today, and thank you, Captain Butterfield. We appreciate your service. Thank you. This morning, we'll have a lot of presentations with regarding everything that is, uh, again, happening here in parish. And our emcee for today is one of our deputy county administrators, Evan Polakowski. Evan, thanks, sir.
Good, good morning. Good morning, everybody. I really want to thank the board for the opportunity this morning to highlight the, the many great things that the, the staff is doing, the team here is going to highlight. And that's only possible with the support and the leadership of the board. So thank you for that. So starting out, uh, we're going to start with Development Services. I'm going to introduce Nicole Knapp. She is the Director of Development Services, and she'll run through a few slides.
Good morning, everybody. As Evan said, I'm Nicole Knapp, Director of Development Services. And, um, this is the department that's responsible for all things associated with building with the community. That includes zoning and planning, transportation planning, environmental planning, traffic design, floodplain management, and then finally, our building division. Uh, we plan for both short and long range, um, growth in our community. Uh, we review the plans, no matter how small or how large those plans may be. And we see those plans all the way through to the, the building permit and, and final certificate of occupancy. So if you will, you can look at it kind of like a cradle to grave, um, department. So today I'm here to speak about, I'm not here to speak about one project in the community. I'm here to speak about the planning process and how that works. Um, how an idea transitioned to an approved project, how all the different departments within the county work together to review those departments, uh, to review those plans, um, whether it be from the resident community or the development community. And then, um, how they work together to ensure all the regulations of the, um, the, the different regulations that we have in place that are met. So it starts with, um, the county has, uh, what's called a reviewer on call, and they are in our zoning division. And this staff is dedicated to answering inquiries on zoning and land use and setbacks. Something as simple as where can I put my shed, or all the way up to a large mixed-use plan development. And as you can see, if you can see that from there, um, we average about 4,000 of these inquiries every year. Sometimes property owners have many ideas of what they'd like to do with their property. So they'll schedule what's called a scoping meeting, and this is more like a brainstorming effort. They'll meet with each of the different discipline areas to kind of vet those ideas and see what, if anything, can work on their property. Again, whether it's for a residential property or a large mixed-use development. And this is different than a pre-op, which is another option that we offer anybody. They can come in with, they have a specific idea, and that will actually have a specific use, a specific plan, and we'll give official review comments on that idea, um, on those plans, um, all the pros and negatives of how it does or doesn't comply with our codes. Once, or if an applicant is ready to submit, everything we review is online. Um, that happened in roughly 2018, where everything is no longer reviewing in paper copies. And we review all types of applications, now, again, no matter how big or how small, um, site plan subdivisions and rezones. Um, and then we have over 20 different discipline areas that touch and review those plans. And that, again, that's environmental, traffic design, transportation, utilities, stormwater, the fire districts, the school district, health departments if appropriate. And as part of that review, um, back in 2019, the legislation adopted, um, new legislation, uh, we commonly call it House Bill 7103, but it formalized what that review process must look like. So an applicant submits to us their plans, and the staff is allowed up to the 30 days to review those plans and produce comments. Um, and then the applicant gets the same. They get the same, up to 30 days, it could be less, to revise their plans and re-submit to us. That cycle can go back two, three, four, five times. It really depends on the applicant's team and what, how they address each of the concerns. And so you can see how, if every review takes 30 days or, or a little less, you can see how easily an administrative review that doesn't require board approval can take four to six months. Whereas if something requires board approval, it, again, it easily can be six months and up, excuse me, upwards. Um, once all those comments are satisfied, if it does require, if the plans do require board approval, then the staff prepares a, a staff report, uh, with very detailed analysis and consistency findings with our comp plan and our code. And that is also reviewed by the county board of, um, the county attorney's office before it is, um, presented in front of the planning commission. The planning commission is an advisory board. They're made up of seven members. And at their public hearings, the staff and the applicant give a presentation. The public is, uh, allowed public comment. And, um, and then there's public input as well. Ultimately, the planning commission makes a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. Depending on how the calendar lays out, two to four weeks later, those items will appear in front of the Board of County Commissioners. Um, again, same presentation by the applicant, presentation by the staff, uh, public input from the, the public has public comment. And then there's a decision ultimately made by the board. But even when that happens, in many cases, in most cases, there's still additional review that's done administratively before they can even have those final sets of approvals and then ultimately file for any building permits. Um, so it's still required, even though the board may approve it. There's still a lot of rigorous review that goes on by your, um, technical staff of all the different discipline areas that I commented on before. So hopefully you can see that from where you are, but the, the numbers that are off to the side. But there's often this misconception that everything that staff receives is, um, ultimately just approved. But it, hopefully throughout this presentation, I've provided you with a more in-depth look of the rigorous process that it goes through. So the 4,000 inquiries that we get, you can see how only 3% ultimately make it in front of the board. And it's because so many of those ideas couldn't come to fruition, because they can't meet the comprehensive plan or the code. So, um, um, they're, just keep in mind that the development review staff, with all those disciplines that I described to you, is very disciplined and, um, dedicated to making sure that every plan, no matter how big or how small, meets all of our codes and regulations. And that's it for me. I don't know who's up next.
All right. Thank you, Nicole. And just a word, word of caution for the speakers. If you do come up the stairs, it's easy to see the stairs coming up, but it's, it's, uh, much more difficult to see them going down. So just take your time. So next up, we have Jimmy Crutchfield, or James Crutchfield. Uh, he is the Deputy Director of Public Safety.
Thank you, Evan. Good morning, commissioners. Good morning, parish. James Crutchfield, Deputy Director of Public Safety. I'm here today to talk to you about the best department, I'm sorry, uh, for my peers and colleagues, public safety. Yeah. Yeah, public. All right. So public safety is divided up into five divisions. Um, you know, I think a lot of times individuals think of public safety as, uh, the EMS folks, but there's a lot of things that go on predominantly around our mission statement, which is to protect the lives and property of those who live and work and visit Manatee County. So from Beach Patrol, who protect our waterways and pools, code enforcement, who ensures that there's compliance in our local ordinance, emergency communications, who process all the 911 calls that come in, emergency management, who protects us during critical incidents, and then EMS, who responds to 911 calls. I know that this is a little bit outside of parish, but I do think it's still incredibly important to talk about, because anything that we add into the emergency response network system, it affects the outcome. Um, so we just had a groundbreaking this week of our EMS Moxon Wallow Station 22. Um, it's incredibly important. Um, it's the second purposely-built EMS station, uh, for Manatee County. Um, it has the community in mind and also employees in mind. It's 4,500 square feet, and anything that we add to the 911 system results in, in better response times and better outcomes for the individuals who call 911. So as our community continues to grow, so does the dedication of the Board of County Commissioners. They continue to invest in public safety. And, you know, while my colleagues are going to talk about roadways and, and, and making sure water goes in the right direction and sewage goes in the right direction, today I'm really, uh, want to just focus on the 911 response and the investment that the board has made, uh, for you all and for the county employees and county staff. So this picture here, the purple dots are some of the new, uh, newly adopted, uh, EMS stations. And then also recognizing that, uh, there are some other dots that aren't on this map, but the board has, uh, fully funded, uh, $16 million in capital investment for the emergency response system. EMS Station 22, uh, again, that was the one that we just broke ground on, will be, um, in service online in 2025. And EMS 20 is a relocate to allow, um, future growth for EMS in our, in our fire district. Um, so we're moving out of the fire station just right down the road to allow us to, uh, add an additional resource. So let's take a, a moment to highlight some of the exceptional, uh, work that the EMS, uh, division does. EMS Division inside public safety, uh, we run, or the EMS service runs about 60,000 calls annually. Um, with an average response time of eight minutes and 14 seconds. Um, I do want to just champion some of the, the, the statistics of the division. Uh, we have a cardiac resuscitation save rate. So if someone experienced, um, a heart attack or becomes, um, unresponsive, we average a 36% save rate, um, which is higher than the state average and higher than the national average. The team here does an exceptional job to make sure that, you know, the individuals that are accessing 911 are getting the appropriate care at the right time, at the right, right cost. Here in parish, uh, last year, there was 3,120 calls, and the division transported 2,000 of those. If we were to pull up just a little bit, like I said, uh, anything that's added to the 911 system affects the overall, uh, performance of the system. Uh, there's 23 ambulances in Manatee County, and they average about 24,000 miles a year on each of those ambulances. To the right of this screen, uh, you'll see that, uh, there's some additional board-approved capital items that are predominantly going to affect this community, uh, with one of the largest being the Rural Paramedic Program, and then relocating and expanding some resources in the community. Before I advance, I do just want to champion and say that the EMS Division was CAS accredited this year, uh, and that is less than 1% nationwide. There is a slide that was out of order, so I advanced. We'll, we'll talk about all the, all the great things. I'm pretty passionate about public safety, and I could spend the entire day, uh, talking about the innovation and the great things that the department's doing, um, from a drone program to telehealth, to pre-hospital blood, to the community health program, and even to traffic preemption. All of these things affect, um, the service that's being delivered to the community. Uh, but first, I would really like to highlight the first-in-the-nation 911 drone program here in Manatee County. It's a groundbreaking program, and it's a collaborative program with Tampa General, Archer First Response, and our public safety department. Um, it is the first in the nation. Uh, it utilizes a drone to deliver some pre-hospital supplies, such as an AED, Narcan, and a tourniquet. Um, you know, this innovative approach, it really is about getting access and care to the individual calling 911 most efficiently. Also, it's all about reducing the workload of the 911 call center and the workload of the ambulance service. I do just want to say, it sounds futuristic, um, but the drone is in conjunction with the traditional 911 response, and we'll talk a little bit more about that here in a moment. So let me walk you through how this process works, and then I will show you how it works. So let's, let's take a moment and just pause and think of a time where someone experienced a medical emergency and you had to call 911. So over the phone, you call 911, a telecommunicator answers the call and starts asking questions. When those questions are asked, the telecommunicator then decides the most appropriate resource to send to you. If you're calling 911 for law enforcement, a cop will come. If you're calling 911 for a medical emergency, uh, most likely, uh, you'll get a fire engine apparatus and an ambulance. So what this drone program is going to do is add in to those resources of options for the telecommunicator to send you the most appropriate resource. So if you're in the service area of this drone, um, and you meet the criteria of either having a cardiac event, a, uh, bleeding emergency, or maybe you have inadvertently taken too much of prescribed medications, uh, this drone would then get sent to you by a telecommunicator who will provide those directions over the phone for the user to get treatment while the first responders are still en route. It's incredibly important, because, uh, public safety is in the business of where seconds matter. Um, and this drone, um, in its service area can get to addresses within two minutes, and our average response time is eight minutes and 14 seconds. So I am, I'm pretty excited, and I think that here in Manatee County, you know, we are changing the way pre-hospital care is being delivered. And now I'd like to show you just how it works. So this is all automated. It's a drone inside of that box that has, it's almost like a, a small, um, we'll call it a briefcase. It lowers down on a string. It looks like it's falling, but it gets lowered down. This is all automated by the telecommunicator in the dispatch center. That package inside of it will have your AED, Narcan, and a tourniquet. Again, when you're on the phone with 911, or whoever is on the phone with 911, would be providing the caller instructions on how to use this equipment to make sure that the individual has the best outcome as possible. Meanwhile, the fire department, law enforcement, or an ambulance, or all three are still en route. I would be remiss if I didn't mention that our emergency management team, um, because we're in hurricane season, uh, has been working diligently with the community to build strong relationships that, uh, help us stand up should we need to during a, uh, emergent event. One of the best ways for us to engage with the community is to support the Community Emergency Response Team, or CERT, and in this picture, uh, was taken in 2023, Jeremy, the front left, made history here in Manatee County as being the first individual who was credentialed and certified, uh, with Down Syndrome. Uh, this just attests that, you know, anybody who is willing and able to learn to be a community responder can do so. Finally, one last plug, uh, for public safety. Uh, it is hurricane season, so preparation is key. Let's please, please have a plan, and it's incredibly essential to know your evacuation level. And if you are not doing so, I would encourage you all to follow Manatee County government on any of the social media. If you don't do social media, um, there will be a plug at the end to get some information. So that's all. Thanks.
All right. Thank, thank you, James. Great, great information. So next up, uh, we have a presentation from Utilities. So I'll introduce, uh, Pat, Patrick Shea. He is the Utility Director for the county.
Well, good morning, and thank you, Evan. Uh, I'm Patrick Shea from the Utilities Department, uh, the best department, uh, within the, uh, uh, county of, uh, Manatee. Uh, so I am, I am relatively new to the county. I'm, I'm in my fourth month, uh, both as a, uh, staff member and as a resident. And, um, I'd like to just kind of relay to you all that your utility system is, is really fantastic, and it's, it's really an asset that you've invested in over time, uh, with, with area growth and with, uh, aging infrastructure. There's an, an opportunity now to continue to invest in that, the systems that we have in place and, and continue to serve, um, each other and residents in Manatee County. I want to thank the, uh, county attorney, uh, county administrator, and the Board of County Commissioners for allowing me to share a little bit about what's going on in the utility department. Um, so our department's made up of, of three separate, uh, utilities: drinking water, wastewater, and, uh, solid waste. And as part of that, we also have our reclaim system, which kind of branches into, uh, uh, the, the drinking water side and the wastewater side as, as far as our operations go. So this morning, um, I'll talk a little bit about our, our expansion plans, our, our investments in our facilities, um, the parasanitary sewer project that's slated to start shortly, and the Lena Road landfill capacity expansion. So all, all very good news, good stories. Um, drinking water, uh, just want to, uh, relay, um, and, and put, and, and gain confidence, uh, that the county does have a plan long-term to be, continue to be able to provide, uh, an adequate supply of drinking water to the community. So this, this lays out the, the, uh, line in blue, the, the major, uh, light blue section of the, of the chart here is, uh, Lake Manatee and, and the surface water, uh, facility. Um, gray being, uh, our, our groundwater, which is, which is potentially expandable. Um, and then some other layers that, uh, bring us out, um, over the next 25, 30 years. So, um, staff, uh, is working diligently on trying to, uh, increase well credits and look for other sources, uh, to continue to, uh, be able to provide drinking water within, within the service. We're also a member of the Peace River, uh, Regional Water Authority, uh, which is also in our, in our plans as kind of a, a backup if we are unable to, um, continue to, um, have the supply sources available. So what you're seeing here on this chart is, is permitted, uh, water capacity. So as a, as a county within the state of Florida, we have permitted, um, kind of state approval to use water from different sources and provide drinking water. Uh, wastewater treatment, as you can imagine, uh, north, the North Wastewater Plant, um, is slated in 2027 through 2029 to be expanded, um, and add, add another 25% of treatment capacity. Uh, we have three, uh, three treatment plants, one in the southwest, one in the southeast, and one in the north. Our current capacity is 33 and a half million gallons a day. Uh, if you, if you calculate, um, a resident uses about, or is, requires about 80 gallons of wastewater capacity per day, per capita. So, um, so as we grow, um, 2031, our, our capacity will be, um, increased by about, uh, one-third. Uh, the investments in our capital improvement plan are about $700 million to expand these three facilities, um, the north being in 2027. Uh, the east, uh, the east, the southeast facility is actually currently, um, in kind of final design and, uh, beginning to slight construction. Southwest, we will be bringing forward, uh, for consideration to the Board of County Commissioners, uh, a large project to expand that facility. So a, a big project in, in parish, Village of Parish, is to kind of expand our sewer treatment capacity to, um, certain properties, uh, and, uh, make, uh, connection to the county sewer system more available. So this project, uh, we're anticipating, uh, start this fall through the winter. Uh, it's about a 12-month, a 12-month project. So- So currently kind of in design, looking at overall kind of a converting some septic tanks over to a, a county system to improve the environment and to improve kind of the, the availability of, of growth in that area. Lena Road landfill, so we've been working diligently to make sure that over the next 50 years, we're able to handle our waste, both environmentally sensitive, but also affordably. So the Lena Road landfill, it, we've, we've been able to work with, with staff and, and some, some smart people in the consulting world to look at the life, lifespan of that landfill. We were looking at running out of space or capacity at that landfill. Really, in the next decade, we were able to expand that by another 21 years. So this will get us almost to 2060 at that facility. We are still diligently working and, and have some stakeholders engaged on looking for the next landfill, which will continue to serve the county for years to come. So with that, again, I would like to thank you all. And I, I just want to express our appreciation as a utility department for your patronage of our, I know it's a, it's a, it's kind of a, we're a, we're a a fixed service provider for you all, but we, we really do appreciate, we appreciate your comments, we appreciate your feedback. And if, if there are things you need, certainly don't hesitate to reach out.
Thank you, Patrick. So next up, we have Public Works, and we get a twofer. So we get Scott May, I believe, who will be doing the primary presentation here. He is the county engineer. And then we have Chad Butzo, the Utilities Director as well.
Good morning. Good morning. So if Jimmy's going to play that game, but I got to help him out, I got to help my friend out. One of the overall, other services that Public Works will provide is the fleet maintenance of the county-owned vehicles. So at 23 ambulances, we own a lot more ambulances than that. 23 are on duty at any given moment, and all the spares that are on the ready line to take up action when needed are sitting at Public Works. So the best department in the county. So overall, we wanted to come here, we have a selection of all the focus, what everybody's dealing with, with the growth. Public Works does an awful lot of things, but right now we're definitely focused on the road improvement projects. Both Scott and I live up here in the parish area. We live this every day. We drive into Bradenton across the wonderful De Soto or Green Bridge or Fort Hammer or Interstate or the other options that don't exist or something in there. So we are very aware of everything that's going on out here. A couple of the projects that we're going to give you a status on aren't specifically within parish, but it's about that community need and how everything grows and it began, begins with more options in the road network. So Scott's going to do a little bit of play-by-play. I'm going to, he's Pat Summerall, I'm John Madden, and enjoy your Saturday morning.
Good morning. As Chad said, I, I do live in the parish. It's about a five-minute drive for me to get in, so I was really happy this morning instead of going anywhere else. So just to get in here, it's, you know, we're basically going to focus more on the transportation projects. But as Chad alluded to, there's a whole lot more to Public Works, such as the transit and everything else that goes in there. With that, I'll just get into, we manage capital projects for potable water, stormwater, transportation, and wastewater. So if it's basically in the right of way, we're managing the projects for what's happening in here for all of our county projects. Countywide, we've got 463 projects currently in the, on the books that we are working on. And you'll see the link here, this is a very useful link. It's the mymanatee.org/forward slash, excuse me, CIP Hub. And from there, it'll take you to a listing where you could see all of the projects at a glance, or you can actually delve into all of the projects that have their own page where you can get information. You can find out where we're in, at in the process, what the current budgets are, all of the documentation that we've been working through to be able to present. So it's readily available, as well as there's a mailing list that you could sign up for that specific project. And anytime there's an update to the website, it will email you to let you know there's a new update. So it can really keep you informed of what, everything that's going on. Basically, there's about 85 of these projects located in Northeast County, and we're just going to highlight several of those today. Mostly dealing with parish, but a couple that do affect parish as far as traffic flow itself. These are the projects we're going to talk about a little more in detail. Forty-fourth, while it's not in parish, it is a very important can east-west connector that will basically take Lakewood Ranch to all of that and provide relief for State Road 64 and State Road 70 when it's completed. This is the last phase of the project that we're currently working on. This allows that final connection, so you would be able to go all the way from the old mall there at De Soto and, or at Cortez and Forty-fourth all the way out to Bournside and Lakewood Ranch. So you could just quickly move through the area without all the traffic that you currently see on 64 and 70. Project Five is open to traffic, we're doing final punch list. Five is basically the area where it crossed over Braden River, Morgan Johnson, up to the interstate. The last, Project Six, which is the one that we're currently under construction, is where it goes over the interstate. And we also go over a couple of reclaim pond and over a gas transmission main. So you'll actually see three bridges being constructed out there. And once this project's done, it'll be a great relief.
The added component on Forty-fourth, while it's not related, it's related to where you guys feel like up in North County. I mean, this is the commitment for years in the past. I've been here 17 years. At a time when we started on Segment One, many people can, saw that as a road to nowhere, but a desperate need for the community. Widening 70 and widening 64 just probably weren't those, weren't options, given how development and commercial properties had encroached on those right-of-ways. And this line had been on the map for years and years, and the commitment came through to build this. This will be a game changer in the central county area as far as traffic, excuse me, traffic capacity, trying to relieve either or give you an option that you may not even have to use a state road to get from the neighborhood in the, whether it's Bournside, Lorraine Road, Lakewood Ranch Boulevard to get back into central Bradenton.
The next one, even though it's not parish directly, it's one that we all deal with. This is Sixtieth Avenue, which is at the Outlet Mall. We are doing this currently, it goes from 301 all the way up to 69th Street, which is basically the travesta development through there. And with that, you will have a connection that allows people to go north and south rather than currently, you only have the ability to go south if you're at the Outlet Mall. Segment One, we're basically at 90% design. We're negotiating with land and property owners right now for some of the needs to get that road improved. And we're looking to go to construction with that as soon as we can work those out. Segment Two, we're actually preparing for bid. That is the piece that will go from Mendoza Road up to 69th. And that will basically create that whole connection that you can now go north from 301 all the way up to Moccaswell-Wallow. So it's going to connect two of the interchange's for the interstate for us without having to get on the interstate. Segment Three, we're going to roll into that. As you've seen, I'm, most people, I'm assuming, seen that we have an interim traffic signal there now. But we will be putting in the final traffic signal and adding a right turn lane so that when you're going onto Buffalo Road from 69th, you'll have a, a way to stack there and, and get turned. These prices currently, you know, they're up there. I'm not going to go into the detail of the cost, but if you want to know more, you can, of course, go to the website on those or ask afterward. Buckeye Road from 41 to 75. This one is currently in the planning stages. We realize how much growth has been happening up along Buckeye Road. And so we are working to do the Buckeye Road project, basically two phases that we're looking at. One from 41 to 75, the other from 75 to 301. This is the other segment of it. As you're going to see, there is going to be some roadwork that's going to be happening soon. Segment Two basically goes from roughly a little bit west of the current Fort Hammer Road that's up on Buckeye, all the way to 301. And we're working with one development, they're going to be adding a roundabout in there halfway between Fort Hammer and 301. And there's also a roundabout coming for the new Sawgrass Road, which you'll see in a little bit at Buckeye Road. We're working with developers right now to make connections for Carter and Sawgrass Road. So basically Carter will become Harrison Ranch. So you would be able to go from Old Tampa Road all the way up to Buckeye Road with the, the project of this. And in there, we're doing three different roundabouts on both Sawgrass and Carter Road. And with that, you're going to basically have the ones for the neighborhood. We're adding a roundabout where Bradenton Christian School is planned, kind of like you have for parish right here, where we have a roundabout to get into the school. And then we're adding roundabouts at Erie Road, so that it'll help slow some of that speeding of traffic that happens on Erie Road.
As you say that, so some people, I was trying to, I'm too far away, I couldn't feel if there was a gasp when you saw all those roundy rounds proposed on the, on the screen. It's one of the, it's one of the issues of the way development is going these days as far as how the neighborhoods are developed. Even, even if they're, the thoroughfares are built, we still need intersection control because there's generally, most developments will only have one or two roads that come out of them. And yes, they grow slowly. So unfortunately, if you don't plan ahead, it, it becomes a traffic signal project in the future where somebody's screaming, I can't get out, it's too dangerous to turn left. At the same time, so whether you love them or hate them, being able to construct a roundabout early is cheaper. It provides that intersection management immediately, whether or not there's a high volume there on the roads. But it also, from day one, provides that speed management point of view of where there's a speeding issue on every road in the entire county or in the entire state. So we're trying to get ahead of it, love it or hate it, they work. And so definitely, if you saw the, our Lakewood Ranch presentation, they're definitely coming too, because the Lakewood Ranch area has upwards of 15 more coming over the next 10 years.
Correct. As, as Chad alluded to, it does better for traffic accidents as well. There may be still accidents in a roundabout, but they're usually side swipes instead of T-bones and others that you end up in intersections. So the severity of the accidents are much less. So that's why they work well, not just for traffic control and speed management, but also for safety. Whoop, I think I went the wrong way. There, there you go. Okay, Erie Road north.
It will finish. Sorry.
Yeah, we are finishing it. We're looking at, I think, the end of July to finally be done and out of there. We know it's been a long, painful process. There were a lot of things that happened along the way. Some, just to be upfront and honest, we had some pipes that were put in the ground and they didn't pass. So they had to remove them and reinstall them, and so some of those things were a problem. So they had to come back and redo that work. That extended how long it needed to do. And originally, the original contractor wasn't really getting it done, so we had to bring in a new contractor. And so they had to also replace a lot of the work the previous contractor had to do. So it's almost like two new projects put together when you look at it in terms of the project. Erie Road, 69th to 301. We've got this broken into two phases. The first phase is from 301 to Martha Road, so that basically you've got the four-laning to be able to get the Fort Hammer Road for the school and have more accessibility and everything through there. Segment Two is going to take you from Martha Road all the way down to 69th, where you have the new light that was installed there. There's the two roundabouts shown, but as you just saw, we're partnering with the developer. So those roundabouts are actually going to be built for the final condition when we go to do this. So that means there'll be less traffic interruption once we go to do the four-laning here. But it'll be more right now. Fort Hammer Road, that's the, the big one here is, most of you know, Fort Hammer is a real problem in the morning and also in the evening. We currently have just awarded Upper Manatee River Road. And Fort Hammer Road is the one we're currently working on. So you'll actually have four lanes all the way from State Road 64 all the way to 301. And we're trying to look at, actually going all the way up to Moccaswell-Wallow with the road that was just constructed there. Let's see here. Basically, we're in the PD&E design phase. We've just got to the point where we can now bring a designer onboard, and that's what we're currently doing. And once we do that, then we'll be able to start going construction. The reason we're following, the reason we're following those steps are it allows us the ability to receive state and federal funding on these projects by following a PD&E and then going into design and everything. This is the one, Fort Hammer North. This is making that final connection up to Buckeye Road. We're currently working in so that there'll be an interconnection, so you'll be able to go from Moccasin all the way up to Buckeye.
That one becomes exceptionally important. It's, these are agreements that long ago were included into the development agreements with Lynn Har and what is formerly known as IA Manatee up there. Becomes key, because in the near future, the school district will be working on the, I believe, the middle school that will be on what we're currently calling Road FF on our plan. But you need to be able to get access to it from Buckeye, from the south, east, and west. So those are those coordinations, trying to make sure that we don't end up with those. I can see it, but I can't get there moments with everything.
Then we're talking about Moccaswell-Wallow. Moccaswell-Wallow, as everyone knows, currently is going under construction. The ultimate will be, you're going from US 41 all the way to US 301. We currently have what we call Segment Four under construction. That is basically from just west of the interstate all the way to US 41, Segment Four. And then also Segment One, which is currently under construction, where we're doing a roundabout at 301 and extending all the way to just past 115th. Segment Two, we are opening bids on June 21st. And with that, we'll be assigning a contractor to it, and we're looking at getting to construction in there in four to five months from, once we get it awarded. Let's see here. Then we've had it, recently added another segment on the Moccaswell-Wallow. This is what we call Segment Five. This is where we're going to go from 301 and curve down to 61 and put a roundabout. So that if you want to get to an interchange, you could, instead of having to go to 301, turn right and go up to Moccasin, you'll be able to catch this on 62 and just curve right on up there, which will help cut down on traffic through parish proper itself. Then we have Ry Road from Ry Crossing to County Road 675. This is one where we're currently working, the developer, they're working on the design. This is, they're designing for a four-lane and going to be building at least the two lanes to start with, so that in the future, we can easily expand it. You know, as you know, Ry Road has gotten extremely busy with all the developments and everything that's going on there. And we recently added a interim traffic signal at 675 and Ry Road, which I think has helped a lot because it is a very dangerous intersection. And we are working with the developer to actually look at how to make that improvement at that intersection in the final condition with this Ry Road project.
That one goes in line with, in general, it's not something that's on a slide that we have here, but it's talking about a change in philosophy with some of the things. We know the answer to many of these issues and they're major projects. But because they're major projects, they're major money, they don't all come so much. We're looking at different ways in our operating budget requests, where we've made monies requested for what we call low-cost safety improvements. Small turn lanes, not something that is your standard design capacities. Putting up interim signals where the perfect intersection requires turn lane and alignment rearrangements and this and that. But a signal would help in the interim. We're trying to desperately not always look at the perfect end state and get something in the interim, à la Ry and 675. We, we expect to see more of that in the area. The interims move faster than a formal full designs. They are cheaper, but just because that goes up doesn't mean that's the last thing you'll see. This is going to be a really busy intersection at some point in time in the future.
Right. And as I just mentioned, we're working with the developer and we're looking at putting a roundabout at this location instead of a signal at the end condition. The reason why is because of the, the odd angle that this road currently exists in. It makes it harder for drivers to turn their, turn their head and see all of the traffic that's coming here. A roundabout is much more forgiving on that because you don't have to focus on looking everywhere when you're doing that. So that's what we're working on. And they're also looking at reworking this road to work with the Foxbrook neighborhood to make the entrance and they're, everything there for them appropriate.
And Ry Road goes to 62 in the future.
Yeah, and Ry Road will go to State Road 62 in the future. So we're working with some of the developments that are currently there to build the pieces and making the connection. So this road will actually connect in and go up to about halfway between 675 and 62. And then that'll be our next project you'll see in the future is looking at trying to get that finished all the way up to 62. Sawgrass Road North, this is the one that we're currently working. They're building all the way between Moccasin and Buckeye. And they're doing a roundabout at Buckeye Road there. So basically it's designed, and I think they're already under construction there. And you'll see it, and it'll, with our Segment Two project, you will actually see a signal being placed in there and all the turn lanes and everything. being placed in there and all the turn lanes and everything, and it'll be another good north-south to get people down to be able to get to the interchange quicker and safer than going on Buckeye. Spencer Parish Road at Golf Course Road. This is one where upgrading and doing widening improvements on Spencer Parish and Jim Davis would be very difficult to do, and it would really affect all of the residents. So we're actually looking at connect, making a thoroughfare that goes through existing open land to make a better location so that the residents can still have the way they're used to living out there, but also still provide that north-south intersector. And what this will do is connect what's originally called SM Ranch, I don't remember what it's called now, over to this roundabout and then realign Golf Course Road so that it's a safer signalized intersection for people to get to. And for Spencer Parish, as you can see, it curves it over to do the same. Upper Manatee River Road, this is the one I told you we were going to be going to construction on. This has already been awarded. We're looking at starting, I think, the first of August for construction. This will be a problem at first, but once it's done, you'll have the four lane, it'll move traffic better and smoother. And with the correlation to the Fort Hammer, you will basically have a connection from Sarasota County all the way up to US 301. US 301 and Harrison Ranch. We're currently working on an interim signal there. It's become a very dangerous intersection. And then also working with the developer as we set up north, once we get the Carter Road installed and completed, it'll become another north-south road that'll allow people to get through. So this signal's even more important. Currently permitting through FDOT before we can get it all done.
Yeah, I was just going to say, a theme, I'm, we might, we're getting real close to the end, so I was getting ready to almost a wrapping. What, what we didn't do with this slide was to end with something that was a map with all the roads that we were talking about. So with these new things that are being built, whether they're the widening that's being conducted by the county or the, the buildout of the thoroughfare plan via incremental from the developments, what you will definitely see, you will start to see finally the establishment of the grid system in North County where there are options. That's why in, in the extreme short term, sometimes things get worse before they get better. So with that, those connections, that's really our focus on, where do we be able to see a win? We want to build everything, but we also want to be able to see segments get complete. Like at the moment, Carter Road is an extreme focus, trying to at least build an option. Trying to get it, options all the way from Buckeye. Unbelievable success that's going on up there. So that is definitely our, our focus. Roads will get built two different ways. The county will build them, but also part of the requirements of development, when the thoroughfare is inside their boundaries, they must build them. And that was on the Sawgrass Road north of Moccasin Wallow. That is going to be entirely built via the developer incrementally as those neighborhoods come onboard as he moves marches north towards Buckeye Road. It will, we will participate in that cost, but it is not something that will show up directly in the county CIP or be issued a bid for.
Correct. And basically, the reason they work well with this is because the developers required to build as if it's a local road. The county participates in the upgrading to make it a thoroughfare, so it's a very 301 at State Road 62, we're basically complete here. Just some final punch list items that are being done with the new signal lining up with Erie Road. We think it's been a great improvement through the Parish neighborhood. I'll let you do that one.
So, believe it or not, this is something that's been talked about for years and years. Technology changed in the past. There used to be an issue with traffic signal cabinets in the type of computers that were in there where heat management was a big issue, and this type of option wasn't available. Technology has changed, things are solid state these days, and heat management isn't as big of an issue down in Bradenton. We've had some initial success with some traffic signals near Robinson Preserve or leading to Robinson Preserve, and I believe this has been requested, and we're going to incorporate some, some of the, the wrapping technique with elements of your mural that was just used out here along, close to Erie Road and 301. But it's one of the things, it's a new program that we have. My team that maintains the traffic signals for us and the state would oversee putting them in, but a nice tasteful team. We're engineers, we don't do color pickouts or something, we like standards. So somebody will tell us what to put where and, but it's coming forward in the Parish area as well.
With that, that was our last slide, and I think as everyone stated earlier, we'll be available after the meeting to answer any questions you may have on specific items or any general questions on anything we may not have covered.
All right. Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Chad. So up next, we have the Convention and Visitors Bureau. We have Elliot Falcione, the Director of Tourism.
Good morning, everybody. What do y'all think about Evan as our MC? Give it up for him. What a little makeup and hair will do for a guy that looks really good right now. Thank you, Chad. I am your tourism director, and I'm going to spend about an hour to go over everything you need to know about tourism and more. Y'all look excited about that. Just going to really run you through some tourism tidbits, and then we're going to talk about the initiative that started January 12th called the Water Ferry. We are one of 1,500 tourism bureaus in the world that are accredited. Like Jimmy had mentioned, his department is accredited. I can't tell you how important that is because it, it tells our stakeholders, our community that we understand best practices in what we do. And literally, it's like, it's like going through a doctorate degree. It's very comprehensive. So it's really important that our community understands that. Some of the tourism, so we, we, the board levies what's called a tourism tax when you stay in a hotel motel and other short-term rental accommodations. It generated about $31 million last calendar year. Very specific, limited use. That tourism tax also, the tourists generated 80 million in sales tax that helps pay for services for our residents. So tourism really is important to feed our economy. Grants, I'm going to run you through a few assets that benefit the residents paid by the tourists. One of them is the Florida Railroad Museum. Okay, Norma Kennedy, some of you may know her. She's on our Tourist Development Council. She worked hard to bring that $1.5 million grant for the capital improvements to the Florida Railroad Museum, led by Commissioner Ray Turner, our Tourist Development Council Chair. Really, really great leadership. The Convention Center in Palmetto, $48 million capital improvement project. Folks, that's going to bring $30 million a year to the local economy. Paid by the visitors, benefited by the residents. The Bishop Museum, the, the new arts center, we got a grant into that. The Manatee Performing Arts Center, the assets of the Pittsburgh Pirates, the Pirates bring about $40 million a year to the local economy. Premier sports campus for your kids and grandkids just down the road. That complex generates about $45 million to the local economy. We're talking about a $2.2 billion industry that feeds our economy. The fastest-growing airport in the United States the last three years called the Sarasota-Bradenton International Airport. We use tourism tax incentives to help leverage additional non-stop flights. And then finally, and Charlie Hunziger with Natural Resources, it pays for our beaches. It helps renew our beaches, our beautiful sugar white sand, our piers, the groynes, matched by some, sometimes state grants and federal grants. So it truly doesn't get any better than that. And now, that water ferry. I'll tell you what, I've served this community and blessed to have served it for 30 years. We've talked about the water ferry for 20 years. And this board and this administration said enough's enough, we're starting a water ferry service. So January 12th, we launched it from the day dock in downtown Bradenton, ventures out on a 30, 35-minute commute to the city pier on Anna Maria Island. Think about it, folks, it is not a taxi, it is an experience. And you, you get off the ferry on Anna Maria Island, you enjoy the Moat Marine Education Center, walk on Pine Avenue, eat, drink, buy, and then one block beyond that is the beautiful sugar white sand beaches. And then it ventures down to Historic Bridge Street. Once again, you get right off on Bridge, Bridge Street, and right beyond Bridge Street is once again, the beautiful sugar white sands. To date, since January 12th, we've carried about 11,000 passengers. That's about nine to 9,500 cars that have come off the road. Okay? We need to work hard to enhance multimodal transportation in this beautiful community. Utilize the number one asset called the water, the Manatee River, Palmasola Bay, Sarasota Bay, and it's working out really, really well. Quite candidly, we're using two 49-passengers, you can see one there beautifully branded, two 49-passenger ferries, pontoon catamarans, they are ADA compliant. And the board is going to consider on Tuesday acquiring and building a third ferry that'll have an enclosed seating area. So it'll go from 49 passengers, the, the third one, as the board consider it, would be 93 passengers, because there's days when it's too windy or too choppy that we've had to suspend service. And the heavier, little bit faster boat will be able to mitigate probably 60% of that. The sad thing is, once we, once it's purchased, it's going to take about a year to get into service, but you know what, you got to start somewhere. Running concurrent with that, we, we are applying for federal transportation grants to look for additional ferries and monies to enhance the piers docks as well. GulfIslandFerry.com is the URL. I urge you to go to it. There's a perks pass in there as well that you can get many, many discounts from our hospitality industry. And I'm going to do a quick tourism director survey. What do y'all think, some point in the future, that we run an express from Fort Hammer to Anna Maria Island on the water ferry? What do y'all think? Commissioners, there you go. That is called a call to action. Thank you all. What a beautiful high school. Gosh, it makes me want to go back to high school again. Thank you so much.
Hey Elliot, your, your presentation was great, but as tourism director, you should know it's the Bradenton Sarasota Airport.
Yes, thank you, sir. My number one ambassador.
All right, thank you, Elliot. So up next, we have Natural Resources. So I'll invite Charlie Hunziger, there he is, Director of Natural Resources up. Charlie.
What, um, do I dance those slides right there? Those are up? It is a beautiful high school, but believe me, it does not want me to return to high school. I apologize. Yes, that's right. No, I, thank you, Commissioners, County Administrator, County Attorney for allowing us to come to talk to you today because although this is all things Parish, the Department of Natural Resources touches Parish and all the other communities of this great county. And I want to kind of take you down this path of looking at the environment and the environmental quality that we have. And I moved here in 1977 to take a job with the Manatee County Plan Department at that time. I quickly understood it's about water. And why water? You know, see, water on this planet, excuse me, water on this planet touches all of our lives. It touches our homeowners associations, our lawns, our communities. And our water quality improvement programs are focused on us, on you, to expand our existing resources, support our partners, and plan for our future. I want to look at some of the outcomes that are going to be measured to talk about why our environment here sustains itself, why it is resilient, and why the things we are doing to manage those inputs, to manage those impacts, are steady and consistent to assure that we have a water quality of Manatee County that is unmatched. Because again, remember that water quality begins with you, and our county commission is supporting our department's efforts to magnify those efforts so that everything that you do makes a dramatic difference on the waters that surround us. And why do we say we're successful as some of those measures and those metrics? Well, some of these, just look at some of these things around the county, and you, they're maybe difficult to read, but let me focus one thing about seagrass. You know, about 19, in 2008, excuse me, 2018, we took a huge hit from a red tide occurrence. Waters came down from Lake Okachobee, Chocachobee into the Klusahatchie River. It migrated north. We had to combine that with a drought, same drought type conditions we have today, water temperatures just went up, red tide occurred, and it was fed and magnified by the fertilizer runoffs we had here in Manatee County, and we took a loss. We were diving over some of our offshore reefs, and you normally hear in the water around you, you hear the sound of shrimp snapping and fish and all kinds of noise and sound. In 2018, it was as quiet as this. Couldn't hear a sound. One of our divers reported seeing one fish, just one. But what happened since that time? Again, attention to how we take care of our water, our stone water and our land, we've had a remarkable recovery in the seagrass around Manatee County by measurement and by observation. We now have over 114,000 acres in the intertidal and estuary zones, not far out into the Gulf, but right around here. That's, Manatee County is only 500,000 acres in size, so imagine looking at every, every acre that you see, 20% of that would be in seagrass. This is more seagrass on the bottom than covers the entire, entire area of Bradenton, Palmetto, and the five cities combined. That's because we're working and continue to work hard on taking care of what runs into those waters and bays. And how does this happen? And one of those reasons is the very effective fertilizer restrictions that we have and maintain throughout the rainy season to protect our natural resources. And it, we have scientists that have told us that it comes from our land that feeds and enhances red tide, it feeds and enhances blue gannalgy, it just doesn't occur naturally. It is fed by the fertilizers that we have. And we have thousands of landscape companies working hundreds of thousands of homes in Manatee County. And if each one of them take care on when and where they apply that fertilizer, it has made a substantial difference. Now, some of these restrictions focus on nitrogen, because the scientists have told us of all the elements, phosphorus, potash, it's nitrogen here, that part of fertilizer that feeds our problems. So we're focusing on limiting that in our stone water. And these restrictions are not absolute, they apply from June through September, because when it rains, and it will rain, it will rain, this, you know, it, it moves the ground over. Literally, this morning, in the Sarasota Herald paper, Sarasota Herald Tribune paper, dry start to rainy season has left many pollutants on the landscape. Here we go. We're watching those, we're watching this. So how do we know that we're successful in implementing this fertilizer ordinance and attempting to lower the amount of nitrogen that gets in? We do a little measurement. We do, I mentioned seagrass in the water, but on the land itself, this is just a small attempt to kind of capsulize what we are measuring each and every day out in Manatee County, not only in the south part of the county, but even Parish as well. The blue arrows indicate a reduction in nitrogen from the time we implemented this program in 2011, 14 years ago. The red arrows indicate a slight increase. When you don't see anything on the map, that means there's no change. Well, no change, that's not progress. No, think about how many homes have come in since 2011. We've had almost 100,000 new residents since that time. And how do we hold the line or get improvements while population inputs are increasing? Population usually increases and water quality declines, not in Manatee County. And this is rare among the estuaries around this country, where estuary programs that tell us your area in Sarasota-Tampa area is on an tell us your area in Sarasota, Tampa area is on an improvement curve. Check that out with New York Harbor, Chesapeake, Galveston Bay, around the New England, around the Pacific Northwest. Population pressures continue to put a pressure downward on water quality, but not here. So this, to me, is living proof that what we are doing, we're doing the right things at the right time. And we do this also with some volunteer help. Let's take a look at our keep Manatee beautiful effort. Where partnerships with our estuary program scientists tell us, if we can maintain the environment around us on our land, the water quality will continue to respond. 4,000 volunteers have brought us over 1,000 urban trees in the last year, in the last years alone. 100,000 sea oats planted to maintain and hold on to our beaches, again by volunteers. It's volunteers, volunteers, and volunteers. Keep the litter patrol. Look at that statistic on trash and recycling and tires that would normally find their way into our environment, find their way into our water, they've been plucked out because the volunteers like yourselves have helped us. Because I said, you know, water quality begins with you, and let's Manatee County magnify those efforts by what we try to do. And I thank you for that volunteer effort. This is where it really gets exciting. Planning for the future, in other words, take a look at some of the results that we've had, but your staff is energized by the support of the senior administration, the county administrator, energized. Let me tell you what's coming under these areas of wastewater, stormwater, testing and natural systems. Wastewater treatment alone, you heard from our utilities director that we're spending hundreds of millions of dollars to hit that improvement. In 2014, in 2017, we spent $24 million to make improvements at our Southwest Treatment Plant that for, among many other things, cut that magic nitrogen in half. It cut it in half in the wastewater that was being used and continued to be used for reclaimed water and watering our lawns and our golf courses and our public areas, cut the nitrogen in half. The improvements spoken of are going to do the same thing for the treatment capabilities and efficiencies for the North County and the Southeast Treatment Plants that service all of parish, all of North County and all of Southeast County. One half reduction in nitrogen, that's a huge step. Let's look at stormwater runoff for a moment. It's much harder to control. It comes from diffuse sources, it's all around, it's all around us. But by identifying where our problem areas are by studies in the Buffalo Creek and Gambo Creek, we're trying to do the right things at the right time by, first of all, assessing the problem, what's the problem, where is it occurring? What measures we can put to bear to insert water treatment, stilling areas and water treatment capabilities where the problem areas exist? And then see a result. I mean, this isn't rocket science, but it's an attempt to focus efforts when stormwater's all around us, where are the problems? Let's go there first. And one simple statement, you know, we all, I said this before, we vacuum our carpets and we, I have a gold, had a golden retriever, and if you didn't vacuum the house every once week and a half, you got buried in the stuff. So my wife got on me, she says, you're going to need, you're going to need to vacuum the carpets every, you know, every three or four days. We can't have these hairballs flying everywhere. Made sense. So we sweep, we sweep our streets on average about once a month. And how about this? How about if we double down on street sweeping? How about if we double down on removing the contaminants that are sitting on top of the streets waiting to be run into with the next heavy rain? And in fact, we are doing that in our next capital improvement, two times the frequency of street sweeping in many of our urban areas. A small but significant step to capture and control the components that run off from stormwater to keep our waters healthy. And then finally, let me talk about, you know, testing and inspections. You know, Ronald Reagan made a famous statement in dealing with the Soviet Union, we need to trust but verify. And we need to trust our departments and our companies and our landscape suppliers that they're going to be doing the right thing, but we have to verify that every once in a while with some strong enforcement. And it takes your staff out there each day, monitoring and watching and sometimes sampling what the fertilizer companies are putting on those lawns. It's not your fault, they're there to try to get the grass as green as possible for you, but they can still do that, we have shown time and time again, by controlling the fertilizer applications and enforcement has made a difference. You also can't really manage what you don't measure. Really, think about that. And your, our divisions are out there measuring our surface water qualities every day, every week and every month, throughout the seasons of the year to know that we're doing the right things in the right time. And these are all platitudes, but I want to enforce the fact that we have professionals that are serving Manatee County and they feel and embed in their own, their own body and their own passion, I want to do right because this is where I live, this is the environment I want to protect, and this is the board of county commissioners I want to serve. Now, I really get excited. Natural resources, you know, it's not some abstract concept. Natural resources are here in parish, they're countywide. The actions on this slide embody all the things that we are doing to underpin our quality of life here in Manatee County. Your senior administrative team, we pledge to secure and manage and improve our gifts that we are given. We sit on the Gulf of Mexico, the largest Gulf in the world by volume and by geography. We are sitting on top of the largest, one of the largest deep water freshwater aquifers in the nation called the Floridian Aquifer. We have so many gifts here to, not to exploit, but to manage. And to keep that management always in tune with balancing it with our development. Development here has created beautiful communities, it's created beautiful places for all of us to live. Many of us here moving to North County in the last 25 years are moving into brand new homes. But we can still have that growth if we have an eye towards balance and resources. And I'll finish with that in just a minute, but let me jump on a few things that we are doing also that talk about us. We're finally getting to a stage where we recognize it's important to connect our parks and our urban areas and give folks an opportunity to walk about. And certainly, we can do that on our sidewalks and our streets, but sometimes if we can give a continuous route from A to B, say for instance, from Lincoln Park in Palmetto to the Railroad Museum in Parish with a dedicated trail system that's represented on this map, the sky commissioners and with the help of Congressman Buchanan, we've set up now almost $7 million towards beginning this trail network. For the most part, follows along that Florida Power and Light Track that runs through this community. We won't be walking atop that track because Florida Power and Light still needs that corridor, but they have consented to give us the ability to walk alongside of it, thus rails with trails. And this is done around the country as well in many, many locations. It just takes a lot of effort, multiple phases and multiple years. Because what you see on that map, that represents about $35 million worth of effort, and we're not going to do that overnight, but if we don't take steps and steps and steps, then it will never happen. And this board, our capital improvement program, has pledged to make this continuously happen. With Public Works Department's support, we will make it happen. It's kind of exciting, I think. Let me tell you also, one of our success stories recently, you know, we have, through your efforts, we purchased a lot of lands upstream of our Lake Manatee reservoir, first to protect it from phosphate mining, and then to generally give it the ability to keep a natural environment going there. Because whatever falls in that, on that area drains into our drinking water reservoir and controls our cost and controls that quality of water from the surface. Managing it in that way, we've created habitats that are ideal to rehome this fragile gopher tortoise that's endangered because of its homes being taken around this area and in counties around us from development, utility development. And so, you know, let's rehome them, let's find a spot. And we were able to do that at Duette. It took us two years of staff training and proving to the state of Florida that we had an environment and could maintain an environment to rehome almost 4,000 tortoises, and we're ready for them when they come. I think we've had about 250 so far relocated, and of course, you know, this is a plan for the long term on a property that will be here for the long term. You know, working with natural systems is something that's fairly easy to do when you recognize that Mother Nature is there to restore and return and protect. And so, here we are. The Oyster, the Manatee River, it used to be called the Oyster River. Boats had to anchor offshore and come in by longboat because the heavier drafted vessels couldn't make it. Oysters so predominant, but we don't have, we don't have stone here. So when we build roads and hard surfaces, we've taken the shell of our environment, crushed it up and laid it out as a, for roadbed, and that came from the Manatee River. Ultimately, it came from the Manatee River. So we've removed a lot of the home and foundation for more oysters to grow. So it's our effort and the effort recognized by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, the Department of Interior, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, the Florida Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services to say, we need to bring back these natural filters, these natural water plants. Every one of these oysters are filtering water every day of the week, they don't take a vacation, and they eat red tide for lunch. But if we can reintroduce some parts of their habitat, they'll take it from there, they'll multiply, they'll grow, like in this auditorium, they'll fill every seat here in two years when we place every one of you become an oyster anchor. Something, something like this, thrown over your dock. These are oyster shells. Now, when, if you've been out on a boat and you're a boater, you see the mangrove forest, the mangrove shoreline, the mangrove roots dip down in the water, most of those roots look just like this. And they're living oysters. So if we can reintroduce that by drilling, taking empty oyster shell, drilling, lining them up, hanging them from docks, we're replicating the same thing. And let me tell you about what that does. We've placed over 1,500 of these in the last year out in the environment along the waterways. Not only hanging from the cords here, but we're also putting it out in the water directly. Take this, put it upside down and put this into the water, anchor it, and oysters grow around it. Oyster beds come back. Now, these are fanciful ideas, right? Jeez, Manatee River, the thousand, hundreds of thousands of acre water, you're never going to do it. No, we're not. We're not going to do it alone. But like I said, if we get it started, Mother Nature will find those places, grow more oysters around here and take it from there. Despite that, we're going to get $4 million from those agencies I spoke about to help us put those oysters in the river. That's not a taxpayer expense, that's not a property expense, that's 100% grant. Because this is happening up and down the southwest coast of Florida, up into the Panhandle, over to Texas. They've recognized that some of these things that Mother Nature provides can help us expand our efforts to control stormwater, to treat wastewater better, and reintroduce those natural elements that work together to keep our water clean. Now, lastly, man, public acquisition, thanks. You know, we had a referendum in 2020, asked, should we tax ourselves to set aside funding to acquire land? And once acquired, to make sure that it's managed properly, that in places where we can, where there's a, there's been a pasture, places improved for pasture for cattle, can we return that pasture back to a native environment? Because we're not there buying that land for cattle, but we're buying that land for habitat that supports the important plants and animals of Florida. And voters voted 72% to say, yes, that's, that's true. Let's, let's make that happen. And take a look, since that time, we've been able to acquire Crooked River along the Manatee River, along, we're protecting 14 miles of Manatee River shoreline in combination of what we had done before and what we're doing into the future. We just approved an acquisition of an expansion to Emerson Point Preserve, if you've been that on the north side of the river, out on Tampa Bay. That's roughly $30 million of your generous support and taxes have been applied now to purchase those two properties. We are bonded through $15 million to be able to buy more property. We are getting state and federal grants to leverage that funding. We hope to get some $10 million back from the state of Florida for our acquisition of the Emerson Point Expansion. Why? Because it was important for us to acquire that property, it was important for the region, and it was important for the state of Florida. Here we are, on the coast of Florida, coast of Florida Southwest, so many people and agencies wish they lived here. So many government agencies want to give us the resources to protect what we have. They understand growth, they understand that we're growing fast here, they're growing fast in Lee County, Fort Myers, they're growing fast in Collier, Pascal, Citrus is coming. But we still have the opportunity to keep it in balance with buying those special critical places. I just, I just want to close, I wrote this out because I didn't want to, didn't want to lose the line of thought, but what's important here is what we do next, really. And I want to ensure you, and I want to know that, I want you to know that there are professionals out there, experts in their field that are working for you as staff, as staff to this county administrator, as staff to the board of county commissioners, that understand managing national lands to help them thrive. One of the scientists right here is with me on our staff, Elizabeth Powers, that understands how to return native pasture to those that was there to support cattle grazing, like I talked about, to support natural habitats and bring water, bring tidal water or fresh water back to the landscapes, and let's bring it right back to water again. It's, it is life. We're all working for you. We reach out, and there are also people, I might say, that reach out to the county's legacy families and sit down over a kitchen table and talk to them and say, in addition to your opportunities for development or other things, is your family also help, willing to help save a portion of your properties or one of your land holdings for the legacy of your family's future for natural areas? Perhaps your forefathers purchased this property because they looked over the landscape and they said, this is the place where we want a home, we can raise some cattle here, maybe some crops, look at this beautiful, beautiful area. And those same family traditions can carry forward and give, give us the opportunity to work with them to acquire that property for conservation. Sometimes not even taking the property in fee by ownership, by asking them though to set aside some of their development rights, it's called a easement, a conservation easement, and we'll pay for that for the important plants and animals of Florida that sustain us and sustain our environment. You know, as long as there's a government in Florida that preserves that you have acquired, right now, running at 30,000 acres at 19 locations, will be here for everyone to enjoy. They're not going to change, they're not going to convert, because you made it happen and the people that were here before you made it happen. The boards before you made, before it made you happen, and you're making it happen right now, making these decisions to go forward. Tell you what, thank you for that trust, the trust of your staff and this board to do the right things. Because I'm, you know, if we, if we take care of our environment and if we keep it resilient, it will continue to bless us in ways that we can't imagine. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Charlie. Great, great presentation. So next up, we have property management. I'll have, invite Kerry Knight, Director of Property Management, to the stage.
Thank you, Evan. Really appreciate and very excited to stand up here and speak to you today. And, and I think, as thankful as I am to be given the opportunity to talk about, a little bit about the department I lead, I'm very excited and appreciative that you all took the time out on a Saturday to come here. I think you can tell everyone that stood up here, the passion that they bring for each one of their departments, especially because they all think they're the best. But anyway, I'm going to talk real quickly about property management. We only have a couple speakers left, so, you know, I know this is quite a long period of time, so we're going to make this as brief as possible. But property management spans a very large department. We do- Uh, we do everything from ADA accessibility, property acquisition. We have the survey group. If you think about it, we're, we're kind of sister organization is Public Works. They handle everything that's kind of what we call flat, flat grounds, uh, roads, uh, culverts, things like that. And then we, in our department, outside of survey and property acquisition, pretty much handle everything that's vertical construction. So all of the county buildings, uh, and all of the parks. And then we also maintain those. We do all the maintenance of the buildings and of the parks. We don't really deal with anything public, so I'm extremely thankful I do not have the building department. So. Uh, just wanted to touch base on that first topic, ADA. We do a lot with, uh, American with Disabilities. Uh, we just launched, uh, through the partnership with the Kiwanis, uh, down at, uh, Tom Bennett Park, a fully inclusive, um, park. And that, I got to tell you, that's extremely special. I, I spent 10 years down in Monroe County trying to get a fully inclusive park and I came up here and you guys were already doing it. So, um, that's, that's absolutely fantastic. So, and I also wanted to say that, uh, you know, we have a focus group. Um, we have a transition plan in place. Uh, we're looking at updating that in the near future. And every remodel we do and every new construction project we do is reviewed for compliance with ADA. It's not just the law. It's something that we look at. And in many cases, we'll say, yeah, those handicap spots qualify, but maybe it would be better to have these handicap spots a little closer or we'd like to do this in addition to. So in many cases, we're exceeding those regulations. And it's, uh, you know, this, this, uh, playground, uh, is wheelchair accessible and things like that, but we're also looking at other disabilities as well. We want to make sure that we're touching all the people, especially those with maybe autism and things like that. So. Uh, going to talk to you, uh, the next couple of slides about some of the projects and we're going to focus specifically on the parish area. Rocky Bluff is getting an expansion, about 8,000 square feet. We've just started the design process, uh, with the architect. And that is going to take, uh, we're going to have that project completed late 2026. So it's kind of a long process that's going to be going. If you're standing in front of the building, it's the right side of the building. So the, the area toward, uh, Ace Hardware, kind of that area. And you can kind of see in there, there's a bunch of amazing features and things that are being added. So the teams are meeting together and they're figuring out how that space lines out and what's the best use of it? How do we kind of marry those two things so they complement each other and add more services for you? Couple of other little things we're doing down by Fort Hammer, or Fort Hamer. There's a, there's a ton of work as that bridge. Obviously you've, you've heard that the bridges will be expanded, um, across the street. We're going to speak, uh, later on in a, in a couple of minutes about Hidden Harbor. And on the other side where the boat ramp is, um, you can see that we're putting in a sheriff's boathouse that is going to give them the accessibility to have quicker response time. That is going to be completing late this year. And then we're also partnering with Emsar, which is your search and rescue, uh, volunteer group, uh, nonprofit volunteer group. We're going to be putting in a, a 50 by 50 building for them. We're currently working on the, uh, lease agreement with them to be able to have them occupy that space. And we hope to have that, uh, back on the agenda here right after break so we can get going on that construction. So, uh, they would be right adjacent to each other. So those two boathouses for those needs. And then we would be completing that, um, spring of next year at the latest. We're going to try to get that in as quickly as possible. So. And with that, I want to bring up Molly White, who's the Director of Sports and Leisure, and she's going to help talk about the next four slides we've got.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Commissioners, County Administrator, County Attorney and the members of Parish for coming out this morning. It's wonderful to be in front of you, um, to talk about some of the projects we have going on that are going to bring a lifetime of memories and opportunities to the community. So Sports and Leisure Services, just a little bit about our department. Really, we're the Department of Fun. Uh, we do all the programming and activity throughout the county from your youth and adult leagues, um, to your pavilions, your parks, your signature events. And, and of course, I know there's a park that you've been waiting a long time for that's right across the street from here. So we're going to start this presentation with that slide. On this slide, you'll see some of the highlights of it, but I, uh, we have a video embedded in the presentation that will kind of take you on a little tour and give you an update on the construction. So as you watch this, you'll be able to see this park truly speaks for itself. It's got a 36,000 square foot area of synthetic turf that's covered under shade. So think of the concerts in the park that we can bring here, your movies in the park for your community, free events to bring everybody together. It's truly a gathering space and opportunity for the community to come out and the kids to play. You have your walking path that's covered under your oak trees. You have food truck parking, restrooms, pavilions, splash pads, so many great things that this is going to bring to the community. And it's going to be opening later this year. We can't wait to get out there and do the ribbon cutting and, um, begin some of your events. This park also is supported with the Parish Civic Association and some of those members, I believe, are here today and they have a great program going where you can purchase commemorative stones. So in the opening of the walkway of the park where the flags are, you can purchase those stones, um, to remember family members. And not far behind that will be Phase Two of Parish Community Park. This one also have a gymnasium, pickleball courts. I know everybody's excited about that. Uh, sand volleyball courts to support the community as well as the high school, um, women's teams that are kind of developing and growing throughout the county. We're going to increase the multipurpose fields, your frisbee golf course, um, a walking trail that will be extended as well as additional pavilions and restrooms.
Just to speak real quickly on the timeline for that, uh, we're in the process of what's called an RFQ, which is a request for qualifications. Both, and both Buffalo Creek, which is on the screen right here and Parish Park Phase Two are identically in the, in the same point in the process. RFQ, Request for Qualifications, is, is the point in time in which we hire the architects and engineers that design the park. And then ultimately we'll create the construction documents that the general contractor will use to create his guaranteed maximum price quote, which will be the basis for our construction contract. That entire process takes about a year to design the building. And then each one of these projects, one's not quite as complicated. Buffalo Creek Parish Phase Two is a little bit more complicated than Parish Creek. So your periods of performance for construction will be slightly different, but both of those projects are going to be finishing, uh, and opening in the summer to fall of 2026.
And as we talk about this Buffalo Creek Soccer Field Expansion, these are truly multipurpose fields. And this, um, goes to show that the, the board and our, our department understand that it's, we're no longer at the build it and they will come phase. The kids are here, the families are here. We need to expand and, and have the opportunity for everybody to have a chance to get out and play and organize play or, um, in, in just getting out and having fun outside. This soccer field expansion, expansion will also enable the football teams, the flag football, um, to expand their practice opportunities as well. Adding synthetic turf into this mix is important because it allows us to keep fields open during the summer. As you know, um, our athletic fields do have to close down during the summer just to be rehabbed, uh, so they're able to be comeback playable surfaces, uh, for the, the playing season in the fall. So this is a great testimony to show that we understand the growth, we understand the awareness of it and what are we doing to enable, um, increase opportunity for our community. So this will have four additional fields, more restrooms, more parking and covered pavilions. And finally for us, Hidden Harbor Park, um, which Carrie references right on the other side of the Fort Hammer Bridge. This is more of a passive park when it comes to our department, but it will add another, uh, four volleyball courts, a pump track, which is kind of a skate park, but for bicycles, more playgrounds, more opportunities for kids to get out and have a good time, pavilions, restrooms, and of course parking, and then a natural walking trail. This does have a phase two with it that'll come in, um, at a later date as well.
And Hidden Harbor, we're going to start construction this fall. It'll take about a year to finish it, so.
All right. Thank you, Molly. Thank you, Carrie. So up next, we have, uh, financial management. So I'm going to pinch hit for our CFO, uh, who, who's not here today. And, and certainly financial management touches upon all the operations and the capital projects that you've, you've seen today. But I'm going to focus just on one topic in particular, and that's the Parish TIF. So you can see here the area where the, the TIF raises funding from. And we've really just started collecting funds in FY '24. So we're in FY '24. It runs until October 1st. In this first year, $319,000 has, have been raised. And preliminarily, we're looking at, uh, a bit of an increase for FY '25. We're looking closer to a $400,000, maybe a little bit more. And the TIF is really set to, um, those funds are used for redevelopment in the area. And it's set to run for 30 years. And you can see that, uh, for the first 10 years, it raises 50% of the increment of that tax base as it increases goes towards the TIF for this redevelopment purposes. And then for the subsequent years, 11 through 30, uh, 35% of that increment is dedicated to this fund. And you can see here, there's, there's a number of things that fall under redevelopment that where the, the funds can be used. It's acquisition of property, repair and rehab. We're able to furnish and repair, uh, works, streets, roads, utilities, things of that nature. Uh, we've been asked, does, uh, say a median project and a beautification project with streetlights, uh, sidewalks, things of that nature? And that, that would fall under the ability of the TIF to fund. So with that, I'm going to do my last intro of the day. I think I saw Lacey Pritchard here. There she is. So Lacey Pritchard is the head of our information outreach team. Uh, she's going to talk a little bit about our 311 app and everything that it is able to do.
Good morning, everyone. I was going to be just attending as a parish resident, but my husband wanted to sit at the very back of the auditorium. And I said, no, I want to be close. So then I was spotted. Um, I am honored to be here. I am fifth generation here of Parish. I have raised sixth generation and I just welcome seventh generation. I love Parish, so I'm very passionate about Manatee County. And I see some people in the audience who probably do be back when I was very young. We won't say how long ago that was. Manatee County, I have the opportunity to lead the 311 team. And what everybody's been up here today has talked about their departments. Our team supports all the departments. So there's a pothole in the road, a stop sign down, just a different complaint of some sort or just a question, you can call 311. You could also use our app that we are just rebranded and I use it quite often. So does my daughter because she has a different last name, so there's no connection. We also, we take about, our 311 callers take about 14,000 calls a month. We're, um, also, we also greet people that walk into the building of downtown. Let me go on to the next. And we also have the news flash. I encourage everyone to scan this QR code. You will get up to date information every month of all the exciting things that are happening here in Manatee County and what all these great departments are doing for you. And with that, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Lacey. Watch your step there. Uh, Lacey's, uh, controls the 311 system, which is a great asset for every citizen of Manatee County. So like you said, if you've got a pothole or something, just need to get to, uh, certain department, that's a great asset for you guys to use. You know, um, and, uh, please use it. And instead of trying to call a department directly, it'd be easier to get to the department, um, using the 311 service. So what we're going to move forward in the presentations is I'd be remiss if I didn't introduce some people or recognize some people in the audience, uh, that are attending here today. Uh, first off, it'd be former District Commissioner Priscilla Trace. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you for being here today. Planning Commissioner, Planning Commission Commissioner, Lorraine Prosser is here today also. Thank you, Lorraine, for being here. Parish Fire Chief Bailey is here today. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate you being here and all the, and your, everything your guys do every day. Thank you. And former County Minister Sherry Corrier is in the audience too. So thank you for being here today. Appreciate, appreciate you guys attending. Thank you. What we'll do is that we're going to open up for public comment now. Um, and I have some fewer cards that I'll call first. After that, um, if you could step forward, state your name and that you're a resident of Manatee County. We're going to do it for 30 minutes. Each person gets three minutes each for the public comment. We ask that the public comment be on today's, uh, topics. And, um, that, that way staff that'll be here and the commissioners will be here will be able to meet with you afterwards and discuss, uh, your comments or your concerns. So who'd like to call up first is Ken Knight. Is Ken here? There he is. Good to see you, sir. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, glad to have you all here today. A lot of my stuff was answered. Uh, I would like to begin with a thank you. Commissioner Cruz, a while back, we were speaking and we were talking about the tunnels to towers that's coming into Bradenton. And I am a member of the Parish Yelkes Lodge and we were trying to get involved in that. And with the information that Commissioner Cruz gave me, I was able to contact them and, uh, directly. And, uh, I will be at the groundbreaking ceremony on Saturday next. My questions actually were answered through the, uh, utilities and through, uh, the gentleman speaking about the sewer and mortar. And I appreciate what you all are doing and I do appreciate that very much. And with that, I'll sit back down. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good to see you today. Thank you. Next up is, uh, Carol Anne Phelps. Carol Anne? Nice to see you today.
Thank you. Um, I took a lot of notes here, so I, I don't know how much I could, uh, skip around. First off, thank you for having this. Um, I understand there's one done, um, at Lakewood Ranch. We also had the Neighborhood Summit at Lakewood Ranch. And, um, there's a lot of things that we covered in here that, uh, a little bit of a misnomer to say all things Parish. There's a great need for District One to be addressed as District One. And, um, being as we do not currently have a commissioner representing us, um, we would like to have that addressed as far as looking at us as a district because we are a new district and, uh, we would like to form a, uh, allegiance and an identity with the rest of the, uh, areas, uh, in Parish, Ellington and Palmetto that make up District One. A lot of things that we went over, um, I wish there were more people here. I wish that we had a better, uh, attendance. This is not representative of, what are we at? 60, 70,000 people in the district. So I hope there is something planned for, uh, all things District One. I mean, we, we need something like that. A lot of these things that we've gone through were very informational, uh, very up to date. Uh, we're looking forward to the Citizens Academy that I understand we're rolling out. And again, I'd like to see more, um, communication on that as well. Maybe on some of our, um, utilization of our boxes for art, having pictures of the herents and the cranes and all that kind of stuff is great, but maybe that might be a place, you know what I've always been about? The sign lady. Let people know what you're doing out there so they could attend and be a part of it. Um, I've been around Charlie Hunziker for, well, since I moved here, he moved here 30, 30 years ago. We talked about Rails to Trails back then. We still haven't been able to completely have a trail system as we envisioned 30 years ago. And it's something that, um, I hope we don't forget and that we continue, continue, uh, to consider that. We talked a lot about how much work we're doing for our growth. And we did have, we do have one more session coming up. And I'm sure it's very obvious that we have a lot of infrastructure to pay for to handle that growth. And I understand where we're at as far as our impact fees go. So we'd like to know what Plan B is. If we're not going to do Plan A, if we're not If we're not going to do Plan A, if we're not going to pay for all of these things by increasing our impact fees, then let us know how we are because that's a lot going on over there. And there's a lot that's going to be going on further east, further in District One. And all we want to make sure of is that it gets done in a timely manner. I think we've got a lot going on at one time that adds to the congestion, that adds to the frustration. We don't want our citizens to live here thinking this is the new normal. It is not normal to take hours and hours to traverse our county. So if we're not going to go with Plan A, let's start talking about what's Plan B to get her done because we're going to have to do it one way or the other. And that's what we'd like to have a little bit more information on. How is it going to be paid for? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is David Dean.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Dave Dean. I'm, I live at, I guess, the edge of Parish and the edge of Lakewood Ranch, just squeezed in between the two. Now, I appreciated the updates on, on the infrastructure and especially the road transportation. That's what I'm concerned with is you've got all this southbound Parish traffic coming down 675. You've added a light here at 301. You've now added a light at Ry Road. But when you get south at my end at 64, you've got chaos going on down there, especially during the morning rush hours. If you're headed south on 675, you've got the sun coming up. You can't see when you're trying to make a left on that intersection. I live there. I hear the horns. I hear the screeches. I've helped come assist with the crashes that go on at that 675 and 674. I'm, I'm urging you to try to do what you can to accelerate either the state or whatever the county can contribute to let's get a light there. Because fortunately, they haven't been killed. We've had many medevacs come over my 30 years of being there. But the amount of traffic coming south on that road now is just unbelievable. The other issue I had was I'd heard that Verna Bethany is going to be extended northward to connect up here into Parish. I'd like that because that might divert some of this traffic. Right now, I believe truckers are looking at that GPS. And without regard to road capacity, GPS says, well, this is the shortest route. And that's why we were having so much additional semi truck traffic coming through there. So we need a comprehensive transportation plant that also deals with this additional capacity. Right now, the edge of 64 and 675 doesn't do it if you're going to run a road from Verna Bethany. Because these trucks are trying to get from not just to, from Parish to 64, they're trying to get to 70. And so now they're doing all these dog legs everywhere. If you're going to run a road north from Verna Bethany, make that an expanded roadway that runs both to 64 and to 70 in a straight line. That's my suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Can we, can we not, can we not applaud, please? This is, even if it's a workshop, it's still a public meeting and it's being recorded. Thank you. Is there anyone else I'd like to come up and give a public comment? Please state your name and your county residence, ma'am.
Thank you. My name is Saralindros Valimaki. I live right here in Manatee County, about five minutes from here. I really appreciated all these presentations we heard today. It's very exciting. What I did not hear is anything about safety and security, particularly cybersecurity. I have spent my last 30 years as a cybersecurity subject matter expert. And I'm very concerned about Homeland Security and CISA, which is the Center of Information and Security Advisory, is that we may have a transformation of state actors. They are trying to infiltrate us. And I am not hearing anyone addressing the cybersecurity aspect of our utility department. It is extremely easy to infiltrate an industrial control system. That is what our utility department is completely for. I would like you to bring to our next meeting that you have presentation, your CISA or your cybersecurity experts, so I can address them with some of my concerns because clearly I will not be able to get answers from you. But this is very serious threat that we have potentially attacking our water. Imagine if you turn your water on, there's nothing there or it is contaminated completely. Or you turn your electricity on and nothing happens. Our youth are relying on YouTube to tell us how to do things. They will not know how to make a cake without looking at the YouTube. We need our utilities to be secure. And I would like you to make sure that some of the bipartisan infrastructure act is also focused on the digital cybersecurity infrastructure. Thank you. My name is Saralindros Valimaki.
Thank you, ma'am. Please, thank you. I hate to gavel Parish, so if there's no more applauding, we appreciate it. Yes, please come state, step forward, state your name, county residence, and you have three minutes, ma'am.
My name is Valerie Masi and I'm a parish resident. And I just wanted to address the agenda item, well, it kind of fits in there. It's on parks. And I want to know when we're going to have more dog parks. When we lost the beautiful dog park over in Buffalo Creek Dog Park. And we now have, and that was like six and a half acres. And that was taken to be used for soccer fields. I understand why that was done, but you're taking away Sycanaphic Beautiful Dog Park. And now we have, I don't know, Olamay Sims Park, it's a lovely little park, but it's no comparison for the size. And when you don't have enough space for dog, a large dog park and a smaller dog park separation, and you get too many dogs in a, in a certain space, you have, you don't have enough space for those dogs to interact and maybe have more problems with possible escalation of fights or things like that. But it's just, we need more, we need a bigger dog park and parking space and things like that. So it would be wonderful if there would be a way to either expand Olamay Sims Park to have a larger dog park and/or another location. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there, is there anyone else I'd like to come forward for public comment? Miss ma'am, state your name and county residence.
Norm McKennedy, resident of Parish. And I'd like to take this opportunity to thank all of you for taking the time out of your day off to come and speak with us as we, we really appreciate that. And we hope that we see you all at some of our monthly meetings. We would love to have you there so that you know exactly what we're doing out here and what we're saying out here. So thanks a lot. We really do appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate you. Thank you. Yes. Yes, sir, pastor.
Well, my comment is in regards to the lady that came up talking about Olamay Sims Park and making a dog park. My concern is taking away current facilities that was here for the parish residents. And the only facility that was here for the parish residents. And they don't have anything left. You know, that was the only park that was available to the peoples here in Parish. And now it's only, you know, it's turned into a dog park. So I'm more concerned about what we're going to do for the residents here in maintaining those services and things that were here before and not necessarily expanding them for other services, but maintaining and helping us keep the things that we, we currently have. Also, one of the concerns that I've had also and would ask, what are we going to do about mosquito control at these parks? Because one of the major problems at it, Olamay Sims Park, was a huge mosquito problem. You know, when you went to that park to try to enjoy, mosquitoes was just terrible. And we're going to have that problem in new park that is currently being, being. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Yes, sir.
Alan Jones, a board member of the Parish Civic Association and want to say thanks a lot for having this. I really take my hat off to the Transportation and Utilities Department for their efforts here in North Manatee County. We've been beating the drum for a long time and hadn't got much results, but man, really see some great things coming along. Just to add to that, for the Parish Commercial Village area, I didn't see any updates on that. I think that's definitely an area within this community that has been bumping along for a long time. We lack the infrastructure. We lack the transportation needed to get concurrency and build out as zoned. It really needs some attention within the Parish Commercial Village. We collaborated with the PCA and Manatee County Government a number of years to develop a neighborhood action plan. It was a collaborative effort among the commissioners at that time, as well as the Parish Civic Association, and used a national planning company to help build that, that neighborhood action plan. I would really like to see that, that built on and implemented within the Parish Commercial Village because we need some help. We don't have the infrastructure, the water, the sewer, we have the water, excuse me, we don't have the sewer and the transportation plan we need to allow this Parish Commercial Village to be developed out as needed. I appreciate y'all's efforts on developing the TIF. I think that's going to help provide some funds to do these things in the future, but we need some attention. And we need to know who we can work with, directly with county administration to move these items forward in a positive manner. Again, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Thank you. Is there anyone else I'd like to come forward and speak? Please state your name and the county residence, if you would.
Good morning, Stacy Jessie, Manatee County. It's good to see you guys again, especially out here. I really appreciate that you all are here, especially since, you know, we're going to have about six months where Parish doesn't have a commissioner. So I think it's great that you're out here hearing from us. I loved the presentation on roads. I'm probably one of the only people here who likes roundabouts, but I think that they work and I'd rather that than more traffic lights that really slow traffic down. One of the things I didn't hear was anything about the dust. You know, residents in Foxbrook and my community and others along Ry and 675 have been really vocal about the dust. We are kind of in Parish at the forefront of the development that our county is doing. As we know, the county center is kind of pulling east now. More and more people are moving here. There's so much growth. And I guess a big concern of mine is just, are we going to really work on ordinances that protect existing communities from the, the burden of the dust? The amount that my neighbors are paying for their lanis and pool cleanings because of the dust, just the quality of life. Like there have been multiple days where my kids couldn't ride their bikes outside. And so what, what can we do to make sure that they're putting sod down or they're watering or, you know, or how much they can clear cut at once would make a big difference. The other thing we haven't talked about, we talked about water quality, but this time a year ago, we were in similar drought conditions and we had that algae bloom at the water plant. And the water was safe to drink, but it smelled bad. I don't know if you've been on Nextdoor and social media, but people are starting to talk about it again. I can't smell it. I never could. But that is just nasty to know that, that there's stuff in the water. Are we able to make infrastructure improvements to our water sooner to, to do something about those algae blooms so that we know each year when this happens that there's more we can do? You're shaking your head, but you know, those are things that, that we're, we're seeing a lot of. And so, you know, anything to address that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, please. Morning, ma'am. Could you please state your name and your county residence?
Margaret Allen. I'm fairly new. First time I've attended one of these meetings. I'd like to thank you for being here and doing this on a Saturday. Thank you. I have noticed that when the presentation of the Parish Community Park was presented, I thought it was just a omission. There was no listing of a dog park on that park. And I hope that it is an omission. If it is not an omission of just being listed, I hope you will reconsider. Olamay is a nice little place over there, lacking of shade perhaps, a little small perhaps. Without a sidewalk to get to it, absolutely. So it does have some limitation. Please reconsider if you have not placed a dog park at the Parish Community Park. That one be added. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else in the, is there anyone else in the audience I'd like to come forward and for comment? Yes, sir, chief. I thought those people were coming forward.
Yeah. Wow. Good morning again. And I speak for everybody else here as well. I mean, it really is nice for you guys to come out and, and really personalize it. It really shows a lot of care. As you know, we built a new fire station in Parish recently and we've been working with, you know, Manatee County EMS, partnership on a couple of different ventures. We talked about, I came and made a statement at the county commission meeting about joint facilities and the importance of that. There's one other thing that I want to put in your mind also is emergency management out here is, is, is a big thing. A lot of people are coming. We have these special teams that clear roadways, but we really don't have any of that out in Parish. I've been working on it for years with Chief Lishour for years about getting an emergency management component out here. It's very important. You know, the major roads of 37, even out to Duette, something happens along the interstate, the main influx of resources is going to come from interior of the state. So we want to make sure that those thoroughfares are clear and ready. Last year, when we had our last big storm, Parish and Duette personally went out and cleared the roadways with Highway Patrol because there wasn't a Manatee County component that was in that mix. So I'd just like to request that emergency management really take a front role in getting, making sure that our egresses are available. And I do like what Carol and did mention was having a representative. I mean, who do we go to right now as our key person for District One to go and actually address? So, so, okay. I, I didn't, I didn't realize that because, I mean, once we had our designated person, that's who we interact with. And so, but again, I, I do think it's a, a really good idea for you guys to be involved out here and, and coming out and personally taking the time. So thank you.
Thank you, chief. Ma'am, wait, you can only give a public comment once, ma'am. Ma'am, I'm, I'm sorry, you can only give a public comment. All right. Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, could you please state your name and your county residence?
Good morning. Daisy Cooper. Daisy Cooper. To the commission, I'd like to address the turning lane from the Erie Road until the St. Mary's Missionary Baptist Church. You don't have one. The dog parks over there, they can turn in there, but you don't have no arrow to turn to St. Mary's. Whenever you consider the full lane, I wish you'd consider a turning lane to St. Mary's Missionary Baptist Church.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your comments. All right. See, if no one else is coming forward, we'll go ahead and we'll go ahead to close public comment. And what I'll do now is I'll open up for commissioner comments, but first Parish, District One is represented by Commissioner Beard and Commissioner Cruz at large until we have the election in November. And so please feel free to reach out to either one of them for any of your needs or concerns or questions. Well, now it's open up for commissioner comments. Are there any, are there any commissioners have any comments? Well, we could do it. Did you want to address them? Commissioner Turner, it's, we're going to do commissioner comments so you can make a comment.
On the algae concern, that's legitimate. The end of last summer, I did a tour because, you know, in District Five, there's a lot of people complaining about the smell as well, a little sulfur. of people complaining about the smell as well, a little sulfur. And so I went out there to have a look. I can tell you that the staff out there and the scientists are all over it. How challenged in Manatee County is our water supply, the majority of it is above ground, it's from Lake Manatee. So there's some inherent problems, but I can tell you the staff, the staff at the water plant are proactive about it. They're all over it. I mean, there was a huge discussion about it last year, so I know they're all over it this year. So just so you know, there's a lot of attention on that.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Van Ostenbridge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, the lake on the subject of water as well, we know the algae is going to start sooner than later, but the good news is it's going to rain next week, and I'm as accurate as any other weatherman you've ever met in your life. But the lake's shallow, and it's hot. And that's the problem with the algae, and that's Mother Nature, and we're not going to be able to change that. If we were further up north, we have much deeper lakes, and it would keep it cooler. You're just going off of my memory here, but the question about the Baptist Church turn lane, I mean, as long as y'all will give us some land for the turn lane, I don't know why we couldn't do a turn lane, that's not all that difficult. Subject of dog parks, I was talking to the administrator while we were hearing public comment, and we agree another dog park is needed somewhere in Parish, and that's something we'll just add to our to-do list, basically. Dust, that was the other big one. So we have taken action on dust. We're government, so we don't move as fast as everyone would like. The rain will probably get here faster than our ordinance gets implemented, but once it's implemented, it will be implemented for good. So for future dry seasons, that should solve that. But we have implemented a new dust policy that cracks down significantly on developers' ability to just clear large tracts of land and puts a lot of requirements on them for water that has to be available and then applied as well. And it eliminates the, you know, we're only here Monday through Friday, so that's the only time we're applying water. That's not going to fly in the future. They'll have to be applying water seven days a week. There is a long list of things that they have to adhere to going forward. So that has been tackled as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. County Administrator Bishop.
Yeah, I like to talk about cybersecurity. We do take that very serious. Actually, our director, Drew Regerson, came from a consulting firm from cybersecurity. And also, your leadership team last month, all of us took a class on the importance of cybersecurity and making sure that we follow suit. I also like to remind the board that this Wednesday, we have a workshop on our budget, and cybersecurity is one of our main topics.
All right. Thank you, sir. Before we adjourn today, I appreciate there are no comments on pickleball. We've gotten worn out on pickleball, so appreciate no comments on pickleball. First off, I'd like to thank each and every one of you for being here today. It's so important for citizen involvement and for us to be able to hear the needs out here in Parish. So thank you very much for being here. And like I said, please reach out to Commissioner Bearden or Commissioner Cruz. Okay, thank you. I'd also like to thank the Parish Community High School for allowing us to be here today and its principal, Dan Bradshaw. And Parish Community High School is the home of the 2003 state girls softball champion. So, so 2023, did I say that?
Yeah, you said three.
Oh, 2023, sorry.
It was a good year.
Thank you very much. And hopefully you go back to back.
They did.
They did? Wow. I just don't follow girls softball, sorry. I guess I will from now on. So, and I'd like to thank our staff for being here today on a Saturday. And County Administrator Bishop and our board, and thank you for being here. Commissioner Cruz.
Yeah, just two things real quick. Pastor, if you want to stick around after, I know one of your parishioners was in the process of putting us together, and I've been out to the church to look at the land you could use, or more to the point, could not use to do that. So let's catch up after and trade contact information. Also, this is drinking from a fire hose kind of thing, there's only so much time. But for everyone in Parish, every month I do a town hall. This particular month, next Thursday, June 13th at 6:00 PM, I've got an open town hall at Rocky Buff Library, so we can get a little more into the weeds on some of the questions you may have, a little more open-ended. They usually last a couple of hours. So feel free to come by if you have specific questions about things that we've discussed today or anything else that we didn't get around to discussing today.
Thank you, sir. With that, we stand adjourned. Thank you.